For amber waves of grain, for purple mountain majesty, above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, and round thy good with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea.
Thank you, everyone. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers, and there is also an automatic external defibrillator that is available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and her God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
We do have some guests in our audience today that we would like to have introduced, and then we'll go through a little bit of the agenda, and then there'll be a short presentation about the group and any questions that they may have. Commissioner Kraft, do you want to introduce your guests?
Yes. We have a contingent from ten Asian countries, Southeast Asia, and the contingent is called the Young Southeast Asian Leadership Initiative. This is brought to us by the State Department, and we are very pleased to have you. We thank you for coming. Behind us sit some of our staff in the office. We have our county attorney. We have a staff person who works doing whatever she's asked to. Our chief financial officer, our county administrator, assistant administrator, and our legislative aide, who handles labor negotiations and things with the legislature. As Claire had told you, we are a creature of the state. The legislature controls what we do and how we do it, pretty much. They leave a lot of the how-to to us. We are very pleased to have you. We will do a formal presentation a little bit later in the meeting. Thank you.
With that, we will begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Mr. Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Rogers, Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, October 11th, 2016, and Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, October 25th, 2016, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B?
No. Second.
Motion by Boyle, second by Kraft. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
And while we're voting, when Commissioner Duda and I were talking about protesting evaluation on your house or something, that's handled by the Board of Equalization. We are currently sitting as a unit, as a Board of Equalization.
Item C, citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak about an item to the Board of Equalization, an item not on the agenda, to the Board of Equalization? Seeing none, there is one resolution approving the application for tax exemptions on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the county treasurer.
Motion to approve.
Does that include adjournment?
Yes, it does. Second.
Motion by Boyle, second by Duda. Any questions or comments? Please vote. Agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Mr. Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Rogers, Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, October 11th, 2016, and Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, October 18th, 2016. Is there a motion to approve Items A and B?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Boyle, seconded by Duda. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
I'm abstaining. His just yet. My count.
Next is the consent agenda.
One moment, please.
Well, may I explain something?
Mr. Rogers, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Mr. Morgan.
You will see that Commissioner Morgan abstained because one of the checks written, he manages a real estate company, and one piece is rents ransom property to the county. So he's abstaining so there's no conflict of interest.
Next is the consent agenda, Items A through J. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Madam Chair.
Oh, Commissioner Boyle. I'm sorry. I'd like to hold a vote on C separately. I have to abstain.
Oh, okay. So consent agenda, Items A through J minus C. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kraft, seconded by Morgan. Any other questions or comments? Please vote.
And again, if I may explain, the consent agenda goes
Motion passes.
Goes very fast. These are things that are non-controversial. Sometimes something gets pulled out, and we can debate it for hours.
Needless.
Or days, yeah. Thank you.
Item C?
Move approval of Item C.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Duda, seconded by Kraft. Any questions or comments?
One moment, please. Okay.
Please vote.
And if I may again.
Motion passes.
This, Dan Esch is our county clerk. He's a record keeper, and the record keeper are the minutes of all the meetings we have. And he's an elected official.
Next, our citizen comments. Anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Good morning, Laura.
Hi. I can't believe that I lost my panel. There it is. All right, thank you. Thank you. Oh, my goodness. Should I wait until you have your copies? Okay. Could I ask for one moment of grace? I believe I timed myself in just over five minutes, but I tried really hard to keep the comments concise, okay? So I took a few moments to prepare these comments. My name's Laura McCormick. I'm with the Nebraska Sunshine Project. Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I am here to share several concerns that I have about Operation Use Success, which, as I believe you know, is a public-private partnership between Douglas County and the Sherwood Foundation. It is my understanding that OYS is a collective impact initiative that is intended to draw together a wide range of public and private entities to reform the juvenile justice system in Douglas County. Prior to formally organizing juvenile justice reform efforts under the umbrella of OYS, the Sherwood Foundation and Douglas County contracted with FSG so that confidential interviews could be conducted with system stakeholders about the juvenile justice system. According to their website, FSG is a mission-driven consulting agency focused on facilitating social change. The specific purpose of my conversation today with you is to convey my alarm regarding a serious breach of data confidentiality protocols by OYS. Let me provide some specific information. When Valerie Bakaset of FSG came to Omaha to speak with community stakeholders, I was pleased to be selected to participate. Sometime in 2014, I was interviewed by FSG staff along with Melanie Williams Smotherman, who runs the family advocacy movement. We both were repeatedly assured that our conversation with FSG employees would be strictly confidential. As you can see from the material in your packet, FSG staff spoke with over 100 system stakeholders, and from what I understand, all were assured the data collected would remain confidential. Is there any way this could be turned on? Because I brought the handout from FSG. As you can see from the material, oh, sorry. Yeah, Reese.
You can go a little slower.
Oh, sorry.
So that they can hear you good.
Sorry.
If you run over, I'll take the blame.
Oh, thank you so much. Yeah, I'm just trying to squeeze it all in.
And then just so every, can you all hear okay? Great.
And my nature, anyway, is to kind of speed talk. So, anyway, thank you, Commissioner Morgan. Recently, I wrote Ms. Bakaset asking if my interview notes had been shared with anyone other than FSG. She kindly responded and informed me that no, all interview notes were kept in strict confidence. She also indicated confidential material had not been shared with either OYS or Terra Luna. Following this discussion, I subsequently shared with Ms. Bakaset an email I obtained via public records request, which clearly indicated the confidential data collected by FSG had been shared with Janaye Pankook, UNO, and Terra Luna, an out-of-state evaluation company. During last month's steering committee meeting, Ms. Pankook indicated that she stored confidential FSG data on at least one flash drive, her personal computer, and the county server. I do not know the disposition of these materials, but I reiterate, at no time was I ever informed that my confidential material would be shared with either UNO, Ms. Pankook, or Terra Luna. Regarding Terra Luna, I recognize that vendor name because Terra Luna is a vendor that Sherwood has used for years to perform evaluative work in OPS. OPS has no contract with Terra Luna, despite the fact that Terra Luna researchers interact with OPS staff, students, and parents. For some reason, Sherwood elects to contract directly with Terra Luna. From what I've been able to ascertain, the Sherwood-Terra Luna agreement governing work in OPS gives the Sherwood Foundation the right to use any evaluative data collected for promotional purposes. The agreement also stipulates that the Sherwood Foundation owns the copyright and intellectual property created through Terra Luna's evaluation of OPS education strategy. Getting back to the developmental evaluation effort related to OYS, initially, UNO was selected to perform the developmental evaluation work associated with Operation Use Success. But it is my understanding that someone made the unilateral decision to terminate the relationship with UNO. And by the way, I included the UNO report in your packet. At that point, Sherwood contracted with Terra Luna to do evaluative work related to Operation Use Success. There was no public conversation about the reason UNO lost the contract or firms being considered to replace UNO. Once again, there is no contract between the public entity, in this instance, Douglas County, and Terra Luna. And despite my repeated attempts to obtain a copy of the contract between Sherwood and Terra Luna governing work related to OYS, Sherwood employees have repeatedly declined to give me a copy. Subsequent to UNO's termination, Nebraska institutions of higher education and/or Nebraska consulting companies were not given the opportunity to bid on OYS developmental evaluation work. For some reason, the decision was made to contract with this Minnesota company that has a long relationship with the Sherwood Foundation. I do not know if the Sherwood Foundation retains promotional rights to evaluative data or if it owns the intellectual property rights related to the work done for OYS, but I would sincerely hope that the county will conduct a public conversation in front of the full board so that the public might learn more about the data breach and the developmental evaluation contract awarded to Minnesota-based Terra Luna. Finally, I want to state for the record that I have experienced enormous difficulty participating in OYS meetings, and it has been extremely difficult for me to obtain copies of the various work plans, minutes, and other materials associated with the OYS public-private partnership. For many months, the OYS calendar did not contain any meeting information, and as a result, it was virtually impossible for the public to attend meetings. It is my sincere belief that OYS meetings should be videotaped in much the same way that Douglas County subcommittee meetings are videotaped. That way, anyone can learn more about OYS. It is my understanding that as part of the OYS initiative, confidential data is being collected from minor children in school settings using instruments such as the ACES survey. I believe the public deserves to not only participate in the conversation regarding these issues, but to also thoroughly understand the research parental consent and confidentiality protocols that are involved in this purported community-based plan. Yes, do you have any questions? Okay. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to clarify some things that were said. The OYS, for the board's knowledge, it was noted that it was a partnership with Douglas County and Sherwood. There's four, five entities that share that partnership. It's Douglas County, Sherwood Foundation, the Keywood Foundation, the Loggia Foundation, and the John R. Scott Foundation. And it was implied that, you know, it was unlawful decisions made in that respect. What happened in some respects, and this was talked about, well, first, let me state, all of the OYS meetings are open to the public because that board makes the decision with the CBA money, because that decision, all of the meetings are open to the public. They noted in public meetings notices, like all the other meetings that are noted. The last meeting that happened, this decision did get discussed, and it's scheduled to be on the meeting. It's going to happen this Thursday at 8:30. The OYS data that was there in some respects that was mentioned, I don't think there was any major breach or intentionally mishandling of some data. What happened in some respect is that when the FSG organization had the data, the data was turned over to UNO to do the analysis of the data, and the developmental evaluation was stated in a meeting, and the group that was known, that's known as the OYS stakeholders, was informed, and it was discussed at a meeting several times. It was not secret knowledge that UNO was doing a developmental evaluation. And I think at a meeting, it was brought up sometime this summer that because UNO didn't have the capacity to do it, that another entity, that UNO was going to end the contract. Now, to what was said at the last meeting, it was cleared up that there was not contractual agreement set, and that's what's coming up at the next meeting, to have that contract brought before the body and put into contractual agreement. So in some respects, that's what's going on with it, and it's getting handled to some degree, and it's being addressed. So there's nothing illegally being here to some degree, and it's happening all in a public setting, so I wanted the board to know that in some degree, and it's being addressed. Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes, I do, did you want to speak? Okay. And before you speak, this is an example of public access to the county board. She was not on the agenda. She's welcome to come up and speak. I don't know how it's handled in your countries, but in Douglas County, we handle it this way.
Good morning. My name is Rachel Pinkerton. I'm in my second three-year term on the Governor's State Mental Health Advisory Committee. And my purpose today is to get into the record, a message that I believe you all received from the late Douglas County Clerk, Tom Kavanaugh, on December 4th of 2012. And this was relating to the experience of a citizen, Ms. McCormick, that day. Beginning, "A news story this morning reported on citizens in a far-off land who are being followed, detained, and harassed by their country's security officers because the citizens, by all accounts, are peacefully speaking out and criticizing their country's ruling authority. Following today's Douglas County Board meeting, I returned to the clerk's office to find that a citizen who had peacefully expressed their opinions during the county board meeting was being followed by two county security officers who were ordered by their supervisor while visiting this and other local government offices. While inside the clerk's office, trailing this peaceful citizen, two security officers were requested by me to leave this office. What country are some county officials living in when they order county security officers to follow peaceful American citizens who are peacefully petitioning their public servants? This peaceful citizen fully deserves an immediate public apology from those authorizing such abusive action for today's ruthless and cowardly act of intimidation perpetrated on this peaceful citizen. For what it is worth, the following is word for word the First Amendment to the United States Constitution. "Congress shall make no law respecting and establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or of the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances." Thomas F. Kavanaugh, Douglas County Clerk Comptroller. I'm going to add in my personal introduction how pleased I am to see the visitors today, and I'm honored to be able to report that my husband was, for 20 years, the treasurer of the downtown Kiwanis Club that has this association with the State Department. And I had the opportunity, on a handful of occasions, to help to entertain visitors from Afghanistan and Kazakhstan, Germany, and China. So this is meaningful to me, to be able to be here and be part of their experience.
Thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh. Excuse me. Pinkerton?
Thank you for coming here today, and thank you for reminding us of the record on this. It's particularly poignant in light of the fact that Clerk Thomas Kavanaugh is passing a year ago this week. And I just want you to know that the sentiments that you relayed to us here are alive and well in Douglas County government. I know that Tom Kavanaugh's successor, Dan Esch, imbues his office with that same sentiment of openness to the public. The fact that we work for you is the guiding principle of the Clerk Comptroller's office, and it's a guiding principle for me as well. I really appreciate you bringing that up because it brings up a key component of our free, open, and democratic government, that without that type of civic involvement that Ms. McCormick represents at its best, I don't think that we could have the democracy that we currently enjoy, which is frankly the envy of the world. And I also want to commend Ms. McCormick for her dogged determination in pursuing answers to questions that need to be asked. And my door is always open. I would encourage her to consult with us on a regular basis, and I appreciate the information that she brings to us. You know, there's a saying carved into the side of our state Capitol in Lincoln, that the salvation of our nation is in the watchfulness of our citizens. And we're all dedicated to doing the best we can, but we rely on our informed citizenry to bring items to our attention that may otherwise go unnoticed. And you and she are exactly right, that we should have clear and transparent operations of government, whether we're doing these directly through Douglas County administration or we're doing it in public-private partnerships with other entities. They need to be open and reviewable by the public. And so I commend you, and I commend Ms. McCormick for your civic involvement, and thanks for coming here today.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I want to be sure I heard you correctly. Maybe this is old news, but people were being followed by county investigators or someone. Can you talk about that a little bit more?
Security officers. Ms. Borgeson, do you want to refresh the record?
Yeah, this was during the time when they were, the officers were told to follow Laura throughout the courthouse because she had been coming to our board meetings and voicing her opposition to some of the things that we were doing. And then she would go to different offices and ask for information. And so it did stop, but it did happen. And that's the point, I think, that they're trying to make, as well as that this board, at the request of the clerk, was asked to issue an apology, and we never did, to her for that happening. And so that's what she's talking about today.
Okay, well, I thought that was it, and I don't know. I suppose it'd be appropriate to follow someone in the building if they were suspected of some kind of terroristic attack or something of that nature, but I don't remember. I know that several people were vocal in their criticism, but I didn't think it came to, rose to the level of any kind of a threat. I, for one, I'd like us to review maybe what was said that triggered this surveillance, and if it's what I think it is, I think we ought to, we should apologize. I think it's inappropriate what happened, should never happen, so. But I would like to see what triggered it. And if it was threats, then that's another matter, but if it was just, if it was a citizen aggressively or otherwise asking questions.
It was during the guardian met liitem issue?
I understand, and it was kind of wild, but if you could do some checking, I'd appreciate it, because if we're wrong, we need to apologize.
We definitely should, for sure. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thanks.
I join Commissioner Boyle in that sentiment, you know, we should look at the record. I was not on the board when that occurred, but if it is as outlined here, it's outrageous. It's a hallmark of totalitarian government to engage in this kind of activity, and the Supreme Court has a phrase for it. It's called a chilling effect.
Right.
So that we eschew that as a democracy. We encourage the opposite of that, which is civic engagement and our citizens coming forward. And people who engage in that type of chilling effect, quasi-totalitarian surveillance of our citizens are out of line and should not be tolerated. So I join Commissioner Boyle in seeing the record of this, and if it is as portrayed, I think it's very appropriate that we issue a public apology. I personally have met with Ms. McCormick on numerous occasions. I hold a constituent clinic in my office every Thursday afternoon, which is purposely to listen to citizens' inquiries, and I encourage people to come forward, and she has on a number of occasions. I have found her to be consistently informed and civil and simply an engaged citizen, someone who should be encouraged in their engagement. And anything that has a chilling effect on that should not be tolerated. So thanks, Mike, and let's see what we can do on this.
Thank you.
Commissioner Duda?
I just got to say, we all got this letter four years ago. All this righteous indignation all of a sudden over what happened four years ago, and, boy, we got to do an investigation. We got to apologize. Where was everybody four years ago when it happened? And we all got the letter saying it happened. It was your brother that sent the letter. We all knew what was going on. There was, I mean, it ended. It was one incident, shouldn't have happened, it ended. Now, all of a sudden, four years later, we decide we got to get upset and do an investigation about it. It shouldn't have happened, and I'm not aware that it was ever repeated in any way, but, golly, where were we four years ago? It's a little late now to start an investigation.
Melanie?
Melanie Williams Smotherman, Director of the Family Advocacy Movement, and currently one of the organizers around the RemoveThisJudge.org efforts to bring attention to the public about the public's view of the performance of judges in our county and state. about the public's view of the performance of judges in our county and state. I think that, Commissioner Kavanaugh, you're absolutely correct, that the chilling effect of an event such as Laura McCormick experienced is what is still lingering today, four years later. These things aren't done for a reason other than intimidation and harassment, and it affects more than just Laura. It affects people who have witnessed and heard about that event, and they're not as necessarily courageous as Laura to get up here in spite of those intimidations and harassments. And I believe that the only way to address events that are contrary to our democracy and our democratic process is to find out, which didn't happen, unfortunately, four years ago, for whatever reason, to find out what precipitated that act, which was undemocratic, and to deal with it. And I would think that a public apology is the very least that should happen. This will segue my comments into saying how appreciative I have been of Laura McCormick's volunteer hours, hundreds and hundreds of hours in this county, to do what we elect public officials to do, but that doesn't normally happen, where she has actually asked the questions, come up against the barriers, fought through the intimidation, fought through the harassment, and still pursued those truths and information to help inform us to be better government and to serve the public in a better way. And I think we should all be celebrating that. And frankly, if it were not for Commissioner Borgeson in the role of chair, we would have been shut down long ago. And I know that that happened. I'm not saying that every single commissioner would have shut us down, but I can point to a couple who were very happy with trying to isolate our voices and intimidate us from getting up here to speak. And to that topic, while you're on the subject of investigating where the order came to ask the deputies to follow Laura McCormick around the courthouse or the building, I wish that you would also look into why we can no longer find the archived video of when Commissioner Kraft was in that chair position, and he, on the public record, recited Laura McCormick's divorce docket number in public as part of her comments to basically embarrass her and suggest that she's here just to pick personal vendetta against her husband or whatever. And I came, I followed that the next week, or either one or two weeks later, to admonish Commissioner Kraft for doing that, because it also has a chilling effect on the sense that the public should have, to be able to come forward and speak about an issue with a limited timeframe generally, but, you know, speak about an issue that is important to us, that we are spending time reviewing and researching, and we're trying to share with our fellow public. And so, to be, you know, to be accused of using this podium as a soapbox when the public doesn't get many opportunities to speak out, and to somehow be trying to work against our own public interest in doing so is, I think, outrageous. It is not what we should be doing or looking for in our public servants. So...
Thank you, Melanie. Commissioner Boyle?
I appreciate your comments. You've been a, as Laura, you've been a real spokesperson on behalf of children and their welfare, and it's been, for us, I think, it's been very helpful in helping us get to the bottom of some problems, whether we've solved them or not is another question. But the reason I bring it up four years after is that just because an offense occurred doesn't mean that we forget about it. It's, and it was brought up again today, which indicates that it does have the chilling effect that Commissioner Kavanaugh talked about. And that's not a good atmosphere for citizens to participate in our government, which this board, I'm happy to say, is really open to hearing criticism and ideas of people who pay the bills. And I, for one, appreciate what you've done. I did ask the county clerk about that archive, and I'd like to, with the chair's permission, to ask them to comment on the search and what videos they have and so forth, if, Dan, or, if you don't mind, Madam Chair.
Dan Esch, county clerk. We did, I can't remember how long ago it was, and I honestly can't remember if it was either Laura or Melanie, or maybe it was neither one of them, but I know someone did ask for video footage of the event that Ms. Williams-Smotherman mentioned, and we searched through the county board. I think they gave us kind of a range of dates, and we searched through those videos, and we never came across anything like that, but it could have been maybe outside that timeframe. But all the county board meeting videos, you know, I'm not aware of one that, over the year, for, right now, I can't remember how far back they go online, but it does go back pretty far. But before they were online, they were either videotaped or DVDed. I'm not aware of one that maybe got lost, or, you know, something like that. Committee meetings, we didn't start videotaping or taking an iPad to those until late 2012, and I do know of two meetings that we don't have, and it wasn't, it was just user error on the recording, but those were still audiotaped, though. So, anyway...
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, because I just want to try to clear the air, and maybe if there's some other dates that would be appropriate, I know that you would look for them. Mr. Esch is carrying on in the tradition of the late Tom Kavanaugh, and his office and his people are open to, they're serious about who they work for. So, I hope if there's another date that might pop up, that you'd give it to him, and they'll search for it.
I really believe that it's not there any longer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, Dan, thank you very much.
And I do appreciate the folks coming forward. I know, I can remember back, actually, the very first time Laura came to the meeting and was asking a lot of tough questions, and it wasn't until I was sitting in this chair, and a question was asked directly of me about a contract provision, and I couldn't answer the question. And went into further investigating it, and basically, no one could answer the question. And so, to me, it was a good thing that we had a citizen who are our bosses come up and ask us a question about the work we're doing, but we have to get better at getting less defensive when citizens come and ask us something or criticize something that we're doing, or that we did, or that we're going to do. They have that right, and we, as elected officials, should be open and willing to hear the good, the bad and the ugly in a very professional and respectful way. I'm not saying it's easy. It's hard. When you think you're sitting here and doing the best that you've done, and you have somebody criticizing what you've done, that's hard. That's hard to take. But you have to get past that and listen and hear what they're asking you to actually look at, and then you will find the problems or the issues that really need to be addressed. So, Laura, I do remember everything that you've spoke about today, and Melanie, I remember it all very vividly because it was a hard time. And Laura, if we never did apologize four years later, I am publicly apologizing for that to happen because I remember the day it happened, and I actually called the sheriff and asked him about it. So, I am publicly apologizing for that, because no citizen should have to do that because they came and said something bad about what we were doing, or what another office was doing, or whatever. So, I think this board has grown to where we are more able to take that criticism, and I think you all have grown in presenting your facts and issues to us. And I think our partnership has created a, our friendship and our partnership has created a much better working relationship, and I would encourage all of you to continue to bring those issues to us, because sitting here, sometimes we're so involved in it, we don't see what you are seeing. And that's what makes the world go round, is everybody with different opinions and different thought processes that point out stuff, and that's what makes our policy even better, when we have citizen engaging and providing input to us. So, thank you. With that, we will move to the presentation on our Young Southeast Asian Leader Initiative. Mark, I don't know who you have coming to the podium.
Val, if you would come forward and introduce and explain to group.
Val McPherson, 6415 Glenwood Road. Thank you very much for this opportunity, for this delegation to observe your meeting. I have 21 college-age students with us today. They range in age from 19 to 26. They are graduate, undergraduate, working on advanced degrees, and in some cases, because the selection process takes about a year to actually end up having visitors in a city, some of them have actually begun their careers. We have someone who has just begun her career as a medical physician. The YSELE Program, which stands for Young Southeast Asian Leaders Initiative, is a program that was created by the Department of State. It is part of the Department of State's pivot or rebalance efforts in regards to the experiences that we are having recently with some aggression on the part of China. It is also in conjunction with the efforts in regards to the TPP Treaty Agreement. The YSELE students that you see in front of you have been selected by the U.S. Department of State in conjunction with our embassies in their 10 Southeast Asian countries as the potential leaders of those countries. This is the second time that UNO has hosted one of these five-week leadership institutes. This group is currently in its fourth week, being here in Omaha, with the exception of one long weekend when they went to Scotts Bluffs, Nebraska, and stayed in nine homes for three nights, and stopped and saw Mount Rushmore on their way home. We will be flying this Saturday to Portland, Oregon. It is a city that has been selected to end this trip with, because the theme of this program is civic engagement, and Portland, Oregon has a reputation for that, as does Omaha. We will conclude our five weeks in Washington, D.C., where the group will have an opportunity to do presentations to the State Department. They will be debriefed, and they will see their certifications for having participated in this program. I have to say that, now being involved in this for the second year, that I am truly amazed at the quality of the State Department's and our embassies in their country's selection process. The YSELE delegation that we received last year, and certainly the one that we received this year, have been amazing young people. Are there any questions?
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Dr. McPherson, thank you for coming, and welcome to all of you. Welcome to Omaha, Douglas County, and Nebraska, and the United States of America. We commend you for bringing these bright, young leaders to our meeting here today, and we'd be happy to meet with you individually afterwards, if you have time to stick around. UNO's in my particular district, so I take a particular interest in what goes on at UNO, and I am very interested in this initiative, which I believe was initiated under President Obama's administration. When you referenced the pivot, that was President Obama's initiative to reposition American foreign policy in Asia, and I think that it's borne fruit in the last eight years, and we commend the forward-thinking of the Obama administration. And I believe this program may have been initiated when Hillary Clinton was Secretary of State, and it's that kind of forward-looking foreign policy that's become a hallmark of President Obama's administration, and we're happy to see it bear fruit way out here in Nebraska, with these young leaders coming halfway across the world to visit us and observe our form of democracy in action. It's not always neat or easy to have a democracy function. We're the oldest continuous democracy on earth, and we're proud of that fact. And the reason that we are is because our citizens participate in the government, and we take them seriously. What you saw just a moment ago in the debate that we had is an indication of how serious we are to encourage and not discourage public participation in our government, whether it's to tell us we're doing a great job or to be critical of some of the decisions that we've made. As our chairman indicated, we strive to be more open and receptive to constructive criticism, and it's not always the easiest thing in the world to do, but it's important that we do it because the welfare of our nation, as we mentioned before, is in the watchfulness of our citizens, and we rely upon that. And I know that in Southeast Asia, you have some vibrant democracies that are doing well, and we commend you on that. We think it's the best form of government on earth, and we would be happy to see it become universally the standard. It's not yet, but the emerging democracies in Southeast Asia, and some of those that have been independent and relatively democratic for a long time, are really incredibly forward-looking, and we will, hopefully, as a nation, do all that we can to support those types of choices versus the alternative, which is a return to tyranny, totalitarianism and oppression. And we feel that that's not the best way for humans to pursue life, liberty, and what we call the pursuit of happiness. So, Dr. McPherson, thank you for bringing these young leaders here today, and we look forward to maybe meeting some of you after the meeting today. Thank you.
May I have a follow-up comment?
Yes, absolutely.
First of all, in regards to President Obama's involvement in this program, yes, he has been very involved. In fact, he recently said that of all of the citizen diplomacy projects that the State Department does, that this is the one that he is most proud of and that he considers his signature foreign policy initiative. Also, the State Department recently conducted a series of all of the programs that they have done in citizen diplomacy over the last 25 years, and they have determined that the YSELE program has been the most effective in regards to meeting the goals of the State Department. And I would like to end by saying that I appreciate the fact that a couple of times in this meeting, you have pointed out the watchfulness of the citizen quote, because yesterday, when this group visited the state Capitol, I pointed out that quote carved above the main entrance as my quote of all the ones that are chiseled in the Capitol Building.
Commissioner Boyle?
You know, I hope this is appropriate, but I would like to have the young people come by and tell us the country from which they're from, and those who can shake hands to shake hands, if that's appropriate.
I believe it would be appropriate.
I'd like to say hello to them personally and welcome them. I think everybody here would...
Do any of them have any questions for us first, before they do that?
Please feel... Please feel free to come up to the microphone if you have a question for us.
If you don't, then you can all come and come around the daisies here and shake our hands and tell us where you're from.
Thanks, Val.
Yep, you said. I hope you do well when you go back. All right. Hello.
I'm Alida.
Okay, nice to meet you. Thank you for being here. It is pretty. You look good in green. Okay, great. Nice to meet you. Thank you for being here. Oh, thank you. Thank you. I hope you do well when you go back. All right. Hello.
I'm Alida.
Okay, nice to meet you. Thank you for being here. It is pretty. You look good in green. Oh, nice to meet you, too. Thank you for being here. Oh, thank you. Thank you. I hope you do well when you go back. All right. Hello.
I'm Alida.
Okay, nice to meet you. Thank you for being here. It is pretty. You look good in green. Oh, nice to meet you, too. Thank you for being here. Oh, nice to meet you, too. Thank you for being here. Oh, thank you. Thank you. I hope you do well when you go back. All right. Hello.
I'm Alida.
Okay, nice to meet you. Thank you for being here. It is pretty. You look good in green. Oh, nice to meet you, too. Thank you for being here. Oh, thank you. Thank you. I hope you do well when you go back. All right. Hello.
I'm Alida.
Okay, nice to meet you. Thank you for being here. It is pretty. You look good in green. Oh, nice to meet you, too. Thank you for being here. Okay, welcome. Welcome. Oh, nice to meet you, too. Thank you for being here. Okay, all right. Yep, yep. Good. Good, and then you got all the way out to Scotts Bluffs, huh? All right, all right. Very good, very good. All right, nice to meet you. Thank you for being here and welcome. Glad to have you. Hey, do some good things when you go back. Hi. All right, nice to meet you and welcome. Thank you for being here. Hope you enjoyed your trip. Yes, it is. What a wonderful experience. So, I wonder if our students, do our students go to your country through this program? Do our students go to your country? Okay, well, we're glad you're here. Oh, yeah. Yep. Hello. Nice to meet you, and thank you for being here. Welcome, welcome. I'm sorry? No, I have not. That may be one of my bucket lists. All right. There you go. I like that idea. All right. Yeah, maybe we'll have to form a partnership that way. All right, you bet, you bet.
They run it at night. Talking about Formula One, right? And I don't buy a car.
Oh, yeah. He's got all kinds of cars. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Pretty important guy.
Then now I'm girlfriend.
Oh, yes, you are. Nice to meet you and welcome. Thank you for being here.
I hope you get it for us.
That's right, that's right. Shoot for the moon. Oh, okay.
Just for everyone's information, we are going to have a group photo up here by the podium, so I want everyone to know that. Thank you.
They want to have their picture taken with this group.
You're kind of tolerant.
Yeah. You're kind of tolerant.
If you want, he'll take the cameras.
Let's get in.
All right, I will.
See if we can get in a little closer, though.
Yes.
You sound very much like him.
I can't remember this one.
I know, I'm not used to not being a phone.
Everybody ready?
The gentleman right there is with the newspaper.
One more.
He watches everything we do.
So, then all of you are prime ministers at home. They want to come and talk.
Thank you so much. You're welcome. I think I got some good ones. The one there's moving with everyone, two first here.
Did I cut you off?
No.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, it's fine. No problem.
Oh, I know, I know.
But...
Good luck to all of these. We enjoy you, too.
Thank you.
They were sure of it.
They're doing the modeling.
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 What a wonderful experience. Yeah. So I wonder if our students, do our students go to your country through this program? Do our students go to your country?
No.
No. Okay, well, we're glad you're here. Oh, yes. Yep. Hello. Nice to meet you and thank you for being here. You're welcome, welcome. I'm sorry? No, I have not. That may be one of my bucket lists. All right. There you go. I like that idea. All right. Yeah. Maybe we'll have to form a partnership that way. All right, you bet, you bet.
Yeah, that would be neat. They run it at night.
Talking about Formula One, right? And I told him I am a Ferrari.
Yeah. He's got all tankard cars. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Pretty important guy.
Then now I go crazy.
Oh, yes, you are. Nice to meet you and welcome. Thank you for being here.
I hope you get it for us.
That's right, that's right. Shoot for the moon. Huh? Yeah. Oh, okay.
Just for everyone's information, we are going to have a group photo up here by the podium. So I want everyone to know that. Thank you.
They want to have their picture taken with this group.
You're kind of tolerant.
Yeah, yeah.
You're kind of tolerant.
If you want, he'll take the cameras.
Let's get in.
All right, I will.
See if we can get in a little closer though.
Yes. I know, I'm not used to not being a phone. Yeah.
Everybody ready?
The gentleman right there is with the newspaper.
One more.
He watches everything we do.
So then all of you are prime ministers back home. We want to come and...
Thank you so much. I think I got some good ones. One there's moving with everyone, two first here. Did I cut you off? Sorry about that.
Yeah, it's fine.
No problem.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, they very few of us are not that fortunate. But there's always an opportunity for the public to just hopefully come up.
But that'll get also have a truck.
Well, the press says he's going to play. Because this new thing, what's his name? It's not very old.
Oh, problem, like real, real problem.
They've transitioned. The prime minister that was in the corps for military. He was ex. The window was pulled out a lot. That's good, but you need to try to bring back the... Because Canada has always been independent, but it's been done with...
So we could send you the video. I would love that. Can I give you my card?
Sure.
I hope to get there. A lot of my friends have been there and they just rely on it.
Yeah, maybe we had that. No later than tomorrow. So. That'd be just fine. Yeah. That'll be just fine, buddy. You know, the State Department loves to see... I mean, can you send all this?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay. The State Department...
Yeah, I think the video, she'll speed it all. We never recess.
No, no. No, the State Department loves to see this kind of... Especially with their theme being civic engagement. It couldn't be much better. How are you enjoying the job?
So far, so good. I can't believe it's... For me, it'll be a year November 4th.
Yeah.
And Tom, your anniversary of his death is passing this Sunday. So I can't believe it's...
Yeah, yeah. Well, this...
If we could have everybody take their seats, we have just a few more items to take care of and then we can further our conversations.
Minister of Information.
Okay. Dr. McPherson?
I just want to make a couple of final comments because one of your colleagues mentioned UNO. UNO wrote for a State Department grant to be able to host these leadership institutes a couple of years ago. And they were awarded that grant for doing one of these institutes each fall for three years, but they would have to renew for the grant each year based upon the performance of UNO. Immediately, at the end of last year's program, the group received their certificates of completion in a late morning ceremony at the State Department. And after that, after their program officially ended, I had lunch with a couple of people in the State Department cafeteria and told them that I knew that UNO would look forward to reapplying for the grant and was hoping that it would be awarded again. And the State Department said, "Well, we'll ask you to fill out some paperwork, but we already know that UNO is going to receive another group." And here they are. And then, after that, the State Department said that based upon the performance of UNO in regards to the first group that they hosted, that they would like UNO to do two of these a year instead of one. And so UNO will be hosting a second delegation of YSLI youth in the spring. And then in the meantime, the State Department gave UNO the opportunity, if they would like, to host an alumni summit for what would be the 63 people that they would have hosted in the YSLI program by next May. And so UNO will be hosting alumni summit for these 21 students, the 21 from a year ago and the 21 that will be coming this spring in May in Ho Chi Minh City, Vietnam. So I just wanted you to be aware of the excellence that UNO has shown in regards to this program.
Thank you.
And I would also like to introduce one other person. She is the program coordinator for UNO, for this program. Cassidy Cooper, would you please stand? One year ago Cassidy was a full-time student at UNO and worked part-time for International Studies and Programs and worked incredibly well on the YSLI program last year. And in the meantime, she has graduated and is now full-time at the University of Nebraska and the program coordinator for this event.
Very good.
Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you, Val. Commissioner Kraft?
Yes, and Val, and Stacy? Kathleen, okay. Thank you so much for having these young people come here. And you're going to send the link about the meeting to all these individuals.
I am.
Thank you.
And I have been told and I'm quite confident that I will receive it in the very near future.
Well, yes, we have an excellent county clerk.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Morgan?
I was just going to say, I want to thank Commissioner Boyle for having the young people come up, getting to meet you a little closer and talking with you. And you are an exceptionally great group of young future leaders. So congratulations. It was really neat. Thanks, Mike.
Did you want to say something, Dan?
Well, I was just, I was about, since I'm giving the mic real quick. I was given the credit for the fast turn on the video. That's really the work of dot com, not me, so... But thank you anyway.
Well, it was an exciting morning and I enjoyed the conversations I had with each of you and the longer conversations with some of you. And we will stay in contact via email and Facebook. So share our medical experiences and other experiences. So thank you very, very much. We'll move on to committees, the first being the finance, the budget report unless either chair has anything else to add to it. Administrative services.
We will be holding an administrative services committee meeting in November. It has not been set yet as far as the date goes. But we will note that the Omaha World Herald today endorsed Douglas County Public Safety Bond Issue. And I know that our chairman and others worked closely with the editorial staff at the World Herald to get them informed as to the benefits of this bond issue. And that's a good thing. We look forward to November 8th and hopefully we'll be able to do some even better things after then with the bond issue proceeds. So thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I was planning on asking for a point of personal privilege, but since Commissioner Kavanaugh brought it up, I do want to really commend everyone who is so involved in this. It starts with the chair setting the tone. I appreciate what you did, Marianne, and Joe coming up with the figures that make it work and a good strategy to pay for it. And Jerry Leahy, who really did a great job in giving us the design and how things will work. This has really been a team effort and I'm very proud to be a member of the Douglas County Board. It was a fabulous editorial. I'm glad, Commissioner Borgerson, that your name was mentioned because you've been critical. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, and it was Commissioner Rogers' vice chair and Commissioner Morgan attended as well with Mark Conry and Mark Foxall and Patrick and Joe. And I can't tell you how impressed I was with them really, really listening to what we were saying about the importance of all three aspects of a bond issue. And for all of you young people, our bond issue is an issue that's put on our ballot when we vote in November. And it's a $45 million bond issue that will help us replace our 911 emergency communication equipment, a lot of outdated step over at our corrections facility, and then some consolidation of offices that are out in the community that we actually pay leases on or that we own. And we will be able to garner savings over the years by having those be gone when this bond issue passes. And so we went and talked to our newspaper, the Omaha World Herald. We talked to their editorial page and they endorsed the bond issue, showed their support of it today in the paper. And so that's why we're all excited about that today because that's a big deal. And so, anyway, I do want to thank everybody that came along and Commissioner Boyle for mentioning all of them because it's a team effort.
Right.
And we, as I say, we've done good, so... Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. This has been an amazing team effort for the bond issue and I commend everybody that has been involved. I just would like to mention for the record as well that the Douglas County Fire Chiefs Association, Mark Conry and I went out to their meeting last week and they also took a stand unanimously in support of the bond issue.
Well, and they, if you all know or have seen, they have done amazing things. The Omaha firefighters have launched a campaign on it. I mean, they have a yard sign, they have flyers going out. And so kudos to them for engaging in the bond issue, so... Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I totally endorse that sentiment of the firefighters have stepped up and has helped many of the first responders to recognize the enhancement of our first responder capacities with the use of the bond issue proceeds. And the civic mindedness of the Citizens for Public Safety Committee that spontaneously stepped forward to help coordinate the promotion of the bond issue is something that we really, really appreciate. Under that umbrella, Steve Leclerc, the president of the Omaha Firefighters and the Taxpayers for Freedom, Doug Kagan and others have really done a great job reaching out to the community and trying to promote the benefits of the bond issue. And we thank you for that.
Absolutely. Commissioner Kraft?
Yes, a quick question. Are all of you aware what a 911 system means? Okay. Do you have something similar? Just hold up your hands if you have something similar in your country. Very good. I had no idea what to expect there. Thank you. You don't have one number? Would you come to the mic and explain? And identify yourself, please, and where you're from.
My name is Maria. I'm from Malaysia. So we haven't quite had a standard 911 number, but we do have emergency contacts, but it's not a 911 number that the whole country knows of. Like how over here, 911 is certain that it means you're going to reach out for help from the police and maybe the police can connect you to other departments. But in Malaysia, we don't have a 911 number, but we do have numbers.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
I was going to mention Monday night, I was asked to speak League of Women Voters on our bond issue. So I'll go to their meeting that night and talk about the bond issue. And with all the support that all of you have given and our successes of having the support, it should be a nice, pleasant meeting to talk about the bond issue. So I think we're on track, so it's great.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
The League of Women Voters have been great in offering us public forums. I taped a program that will air on public access either today or a week from today, specifically dedicated to the bond issue and hosted by the League of Women Voters. It was their initiative to reach out to us and I think reach out to Commissioner Morgan as well and solicit our public information on the bond issue. And again, civic-minded people like the League of Women Voters need to be commended for their engagement, working together, we can definitely make this better.
Okay, with that, there is a item under child and youth services, a resolution to approve the second amended with the county of Sarpy and the county of Douglas to the juvenile services agreement plan. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Motion passes.
Community services? Did you still want to say?
If I may have a moment. Immediately following, or five minutes after this meeting, we will meet in room 903 for a community service meeting where we will have, hopefully, I was notified that they may not be able to make it today, the Omaha Convention and Visitors Bureau, a county fair update and environmental services update. The meeting shouldn't be terribly long, perhaps 40 minutes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, on the next... Thank you. On the next item, the criminal justice, I just want to mention that I've gotten a report that I'm going to give to everyone from Director Mark Foxall that lists the people who are held in our correctional facility who are not able to make bond and to be bailed out. And I think it's important we look at it and see what their offenses are and maybe try to figure something out that would be equitable and fair.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Health and Human Services.
Just a second.
Did you have anything? Human Resources, there's the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented unless anyone has questions or comments. Legislative items, we'll begin working with Marcos even more diligently to prepare our legislative agenda. We are working to set a date for our tri-county retreat, which is a retreat that we have with two other counties within the state of Nebraska. And we talk a lot about legislative items that we can go together to the legislature in support of, or just to share some best practices that each are doing in the areas of which we are responsible for. So we've been doing that for a number of years and it's proven to be quite successful. Commissioner Rogers?
And I just wanted as a point of information, Madam Chair, to note that NACO did have its legislative day's meeting last Thursday in York, Nebraska. And instead of saying it now, just wait till we have our tri-county session, they did lay out and approve some legislative agenda items for the year. One of them was the Turk issue in regards to us and some other items. And I guess this is a good thing to know for the future is that they did agree that the meeting has usually been held for the last 11 years in Carney. It was held in York this year. The board agreed that from now on it'll be held in the location of the choosing of the past president, so that now it's by a post, he's in the panhandle.
So we'll be going to Scotts Bluff then.
Exactly. We could be going to Scotts Bluff or Sidney because of the Cabela situation.
Nice.
So just know it'll be rotating around the state.
All right, very good. I like that. Commissioner Boyle?
Other items I hope we're getting on the agenda. I think we need to figure out what to do with the Board of Equilization. You know, every Tuesday we debate the county clerk's office, or excuse me, the county assessor registered deeds about whether or not we can approve an extension and so forth. I think we need to find out if we are a rubber stamp or if we have discretion. I'd like to have that cleared up.
That's on there too.
Okay, good deal. Thanks a lot.
With that, we do not have need for an executive session. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Please vote. Wasn't I?
And again, for our friends in the audience, an executive session is limited to what we can do in private. We can only discuss labor negotiations, lawsuits, legal matters, and... Personnel. And we have our county attorney in there to make sure that's all we do. So thank you. Please join us in room 905, 903 if you'd like.
Tell you what, yesterday I went home and I'm like, I should take a nap.